Good afternoon, everyone. Today's date is July 23rd, 2013, and the time is now 1:30. Council will please come to order for its work session. I want to welcome and thank all of you for taking time from your schedules to attend our work session today. And before we get underway, could I remind everyone to please turn out their cellphones or set them to vibrate? And for the audio record, I would like to note that the following council members are present at today's work session. Ms. Bolton, Mr. Bonato, Mr. Mattei, Ms. Miles, Mr. Shu, Ms. Velazquez, and Chairperson Laca Gonzalez. Before we move to our first agenda item, I'd like to permit Mr. Aker to have an opportunity to introduce our new finance director.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. I wanted to take just a few minutes to introduce Lonny Medina. He's our new finance director, has been here just about a week and a few hours, and getting himself well immersed in our finances and how things have been done in the past. And he and I have had several discussions about some things that we want to tweak in the future, but not right away. And with that, I wanted to give Lonny just an opportunity to tell council a little bit about himself, and see if he had any questions.
Well, I'm a CPA with over 25 years of accounting experience. I graduated from the University of New Mexico in Albuquerque. And I'm coming over from Council of Governments, where I've been their finance manager for the last six years.
So you're familiar with fund accounting, I bet?
Yes.
Well, welcome. Any comments from council members?
Thank you, we're glad you're here.
Thank you.
Looked up our...
Happy to have you, Lonny.
We're happy.
Thank you.
The first agenda item is petition or communications, oral or written. And we have two individuals who've signed up. Ms. Tara McCarthy, please come forward and identify yourself at the podium, please. Welcome.
Thank you, I'm Tara McCarthy. I run the Around Soca website and magazine. I also have a local marketing company. We do everything from logos to websites, flyers. Some of you are already familiar with us. First of all, I wanted to report that we've expanded to Springs. We were welcomed very well in Pueblo. We have over 60,000 readers, and we're just hitting our one-year anniversary. So that's a huge growth. People really like it. We get compliments from people all over the world, from Europe, here in New York, in California in the U.S. So it's just been going really, really well. On that note, I think one of the things we've tried to do is stay positive. Sometimes there's news items on the website that people don't necessarily agree with, and that's normal. That's just part of democracy. What I'm here today about is a lack of common courtesy. There are council members, and there are people on the Economic Development Board, that have been making it very difficult for my business, and I don't think that's appropriate. When there are so many struggling businesses in this town, and we are successful, and we do provide for families here, we deserve a little bit more respect. I begin with the words. Councilwoman Bolton told us we had a crap app, told us Trinidad didn't want us, and basically told us to get out of town. Now, I've given her time, I tried to talk to her, we tried to hash it over, but that did not happen. Stephen Heller from Economic Development proceeded to chase our employees and tell them to quit working for us because we're bad news and will ruin their careers. Now, anybody that's worked for us has been very happy. All of our employees are very happy. My employee told him that she's very happy, and she thinks it's his personal opinion. Now, if these are just regular, everyday people, that's fine. But when you're a council member, or you're on a board for economic development, there's a certain amount of respect that you need to have for local business. You can say you don't like what we do, or you don't like an article, but it's not appropriate to tell us to get out of town or harass our employees. And we're not going to tolerate it. We don't have to be here, we choose to be here. And that's all I wanted to say, and I appreciate your time. And we do try to treat people with respect. And I don't know if any of you have noticed, when an article has been questioned, we do pull it down, but I cannot keep the news down forever. If you're not going to give me what you think is the truth or appropriate, then I'm putting the story back up. Okay, so that's all I wanted to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Ms. Paula Little. Welcome, Ms. Paula.
Thank you for the opportunity. I'm here for two things today. First, I want to report about the quick draw and thank the representation of the city, the people who were there and supported us. Mr. Tom Baker, Les Downs, Carol Bolton, thank you. And I want you to know that we doubled attendance. Last year, we had about 115 apart. This year, we had about 300, at least 200 in the museum for the auction, and we did sell out again. It was a lot of fun. It's going to grow, we hope to double again next year. We had lots of tourists. I think that the trolley helped. Larry must have told the tourists to come back, and they did. And they bought too.
Oh, wonderful.
So it was a good day. It's more of a gift. We made about $1,900 all in all. But it's more of a gift to the city. We want this to continue and, you know, grow. Okay, the second thing I'm here for is to request... Oh, Tara, I left Tara out too. Thank you, Tara. Sorry, Tara, sorry. Smithsonian Day, I was a week. I was wondering if it's possible to declare a Smithsonian week from September 2 to the 7th. Our opening is September 6th. This is the week before the Articade. And I thought, oh, it'll just give us a little more recognition. I put it in my grant that I was going to ask, to see if that was possible.
I think it should be. We'll direct you to Mr. Aker.
Okay. Good thing I don't like your tone. Okay, so that's really all I wanted to say, the report on the quick draw, and talk about Smithsonian show coming up. So thanks a lot.
Thank you.
The next agenda item is item number two. And that's discussion regarding proposed ballot questions to amend the Home Rule Charter. And I think, Mr. Aker, you're going to walk the point on this one.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. Staff has provided some additional language on two of the sections, based on conversations that were held at the last work session. We wanted to seek any additional input from City Council on this latest draft. And then, if it's acceptable, then we, in hopes of Tammy Tenoy, would have been present today, but we've got our schedule for next week. We'll be talking with her to see if there's anything from SIRS's standpoint that they might give us some further input. But with that, I'll just offer to help answer any questions or see if there's any other additional feedback from City Council on these three potential ballot question items.
I just...
Yes, sir.
I have a question on section 8.3. I don't think we got there.
Okay.
This was at my request. I think you've got two categories of people. People who are residents of the city, and then you've got people who are not residents of the city but own a business. Okay? You count for those two categories, but there could be somebody in the city who owns a business. Okay? Let's say I were on board. I reside in the city, but own a business in the city. This has nothing to do with me, I'm just using myself as an example. According to this language, if I were to move into the county, I would have to leave the board. Where I would then qualify under the second... But what it should read is that I then qualify under the second criteria, which is I own a business.
Okay.
Do you see the logic?
I can see the logic, yes. So we will... I'll work with you to get the craft the right language.
Yeah, I think if you phrase it in a positive manner, which is, as long as you are either a resident of the city or an owner of a business in the city, you may remain on the board.
Okay.
At the point where you cease to qualify under either conditions, then you have to leave.
Right, okay.
And I think it's really as simple as that.
Okay, thank you.
Great catch. Any additional questions or comments?
I seem to be missing some pages from my pack. 3.7, and anything following 3.8.
I don't have 3.7 either, I'm glad you're alert.
Let's run me to that one. Mine is here, so they're all in the same...
So 3.7 is missing? Is there anything after 3.8?
It has to be.
Yeah, there's four.
Section four.
Oh.
Can you go? Four goes to four, four-four?
Do you have four-one?
No.
No.
I don't have four-one.
Let's go find that one out.
Well, three goes to three-two, and four goes to four-two. I think three is three-one.
Check. Yeah, three-one, three-two, three-three. Did you just check that?
Do you have a 3.7 page, Tom? Okay, so we all seem to be missing 3.7? Does anyone have a 3.7?
Three-seven is missing, and then there's... Yeah, probably after 3.8, we're also missing some. Thank you. Chief, are you getting excited back there? It's getting close to retire.
Sorry, Lou.
How many days?
I'm not counting, but it's six days, three hours, two minutes.
Not counting.
Good thing you're not counting.
He just thinks he's going to retire.
That's right.
We do have fire chief interviews Friday afternoon.
Oh, wonderful. And Chief, are you going to do like the professional football players say, "I'm going to Disney World"? Not right away, huh?
Great nuts. Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. He doesn't have four-one. Why should?
Mr. Aker, is Tammy coming back?
Yeah, we're scheduling Tammy Tenoy. We're scheduling her for the 30th. I wanted to keep it, especially since we've got the ballot discussion language. I wanted to keep it rolling, and she was available, so we'll just try to squeeze everything in. We may need to move our... kind of retreat. I'm thinking maybe we do that on potentially a different day. I'm going to work with her on how much time she's going to need as well. We're also having her, as she comes down, do some staff training as well, supervisory training. So some pressure, so trying to tie them together.
And if I might also chime in, I'd like to let everybody know that come to find out, there is a lawyer with Colorado Municipal League who does presentations for municipalities on all things marijuana. Her name is Rachel Allen. I'm not trying to avoid this, believe me. As it is on, he had to, you know, obviously bump me from the 30th, and, you know, so Rachel Allen was going to be on the 13th. I'm just waiting in the wings until I can get fired out of marijuana.
From August 13th?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, bad. I'm sorry. I didn't think about that bad, bud.
But she's CML?
She's CML, yes, ma'am. And it was Tammy who told me that Ms. Allen was out there giving presentations.
The 3.7.
Now, who needs four? Section four.
We... I think we just need four-one.
I think she numbers it. She doesn't do four-dash-what, she does four, and then four-dash...
Oh, okay, I see.
Looks like 3.7 is the only one missing?
Is there anything following 3-8? Because it... 3-8 stops and misses.
Yeah, looks like there should be a 3-dash in there.
How are you feeling, Mayor?
Still coughing once in a while.
I hear it better in your voice, coughing.
Takes forever.
I know. Thanks, Tara.
We got 3.8 there, I think.
Yeah, I think we did.
Yeah, it just sounds like the odd number of inches.
Yes, you're doing it at 3.8.
Three-nine.
Now you have a whole bunch of 3s.
Exactly.
Go fish.
I hope it was spring water.
Is that my car key? Hold on.
Three-nine?
Yes.
Oh, okay, good. And thank you for bearing with us. We discovered we had a couple of pages.
Thank you, ma'am.
Are there any other questions regarding the proposed modifications or changes to the Home Rule Charter ballot language? Ms. Marshall?
When Ms. Miles gave Mr. Aker the wording logo on the boards, you didn't qualify your statement with "and must live in Los Anasmas County." I would assume that was what you wanted. If not, then you could...
I can't remember exactly what I said.
If not, then you could move out of the city and still own a business in the city, and live in Dallas, Texas, and be able to...
Oh, no.
If you don't qualify it.
I said if I moved into the county, but I don't think I included that in the...
Just making sure that I'm...
Good catch. Let me just layer this here. Just, Mr. Aker, is there anything additional you care to point out to us with respect to this particular agenda item?
The only other... excuse me. The change we made was in section 9.23 from the previous discussion, was to clarify that it would read "to the lowest qualified responsible bidder, depending as determined by City Council on the recommendation of staff." I think that's not a very good suggestion, that was changed.
Anything additional on this work session agenda item? I'm not... Will you be ready? Yes, sir, Mr. Brown.
Was it this council or council previous to us that passed that ordinance about being in the county, living in the county, and owning a business in the city? Was it this council that passed? Do you recall? I don't know if Mr. Aker was here, or who? Was it previous council?
Was this in connection with the tourism board?
Right, with the tourism board about...
I think it was...
Was it this council, or was it previous before that?
2012, I think.
It was 2012? I think some of you may have been on council.
I don't remember.
I think I remember.
But that was specific to the tourism board?
It was in February, early March, 2012.
Numerous calls on that. And I was just wanting to ask that question, because a lot of people were asking me about why... What was the reason that the council changed about people living in the county and owning a business in the city? And I think before it was that you had to be a city resident and a city business owner, right?
Just the city...
And I don't have a question, and I don't have an answer for that. I can't remember if we did approve it as far as this council was concerned, or if it was the council previous that changed that ordinance, and when it was done.
Ms. Marshall says it was done in February 2012.
So we were on intercouncil at that point.
Five of you were sitting on council at that time.
Yeah. Okay, that's all I want to... thank you.
Any additional questions or comments? And if not, I think we're ready to move to agenda item three, which is discussion regarding a Department of Local Affairs Energy and Mineral Impact Assistance Program, Tier Two Grant for the Trinidad Downtown Improvement Project Commercial Street Phase Two. Welcome, Mr. Feinberg, you're going to walk us through this.
I will.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor? Chairman of council? You have a few documents in front of you. Just before we start, I just want to walk you through them to orient. You have the council communication. Then there's a sample letter of support here, should the council decide to move ahead with this project. This would be included in the DOLA application. Figure 4.3 is a map showing what area of Commercial Street would be targeted in this grant. That's the section between Plum Street and Main. And I'll get into more depth about what this project will entail. And 4.4 is the project budget that we came up with, and I'll get into some more depth with that as well. We have applied for and successfully received funding for Commercial Street revitalization Phase One from DOLA. We requested $915,000. We received $750,000. When we put this budget together, we anticipated not getting as much as we requested, and we believe that there's going to be enough funding to do the entire project as described in the grant application. Basically, this project is redoing Commercial Street, everything that needs to be done. The bricks would come up, sidewalk would be replaced if need be. The bricks would be reset, all utilities that need to be replaced would be replaced, including laterals to buildings. With regard to utilities, we're looking at sewer, water, and gas infrastructure. The gas... there are two gas lines crossing Plum Street that likely need to be replaced. That will be included in Phase One. So the current proposal before you for Phase Two will not include any gas infrastructure. We're basically looking at water lines and sewer lines to be replaced as needed. Mr. Fernandez from Utilities is in the process of cameraing the sewer lines to see if in fact they need to be replaced. They're the old clay pipes, so chances are that they will need to be replaced. If we go ahead with this project, now is obviously the time to do utility work. And I've actually approached Mr. Fernandez about the possibility of using some of the enterprise funds to complete the utility work portion. So it'll free us up with more money to do the surface work on Commercial Street. So the current application that we're submitting is for Phase Two. You can... it basically breaks down, we're going to ask for the same exact amount we did the last time, virtually the same amount. We're proposing a $250,000 cash match from the Capital Improvement Fund, and about $150,000 in in-kind for excavation or any other work that can be done by the Public Works Department. With DOLA, we don't need to be exact at this point. These numbers are subject to flux. When the street is up, we're likely going to encounter things we never anticipated, given the age of Commercial Street. So those numbers may be adjustable up or down a little bit. I also gave you a... this wasn't in your packets, but there should be a spreadsheet that was at your desk entitled Downtown Project Grant Funding Matrix. And I just wanted to... you all have that? We did. I just wanted to walk you through this. I put it together before the meeting, and there are a few minor things I'd like to explain. This matrix is divided into three sections. If you look at the top section, these are the grant projects we've received to date and total amounts associated with those projects. We basically used just under $500,000 in capital improvement money to receive just under $1.5 million in grant funding. So it's about a three-to-one leverage on our capital improvement money. The second column... second set of rows down, the second section, is basically the same thing, but it's including Phase Two in that, should we decide to apply and should we get it. You may notice that what I've included for Phase Two is $750,000 in grant award, because what I'm anticipating, if we get it, it's probably going to be a similar situation, where they don't give us what we've asked for. So what's not included in the match amount is the in-kind. And I apologize, I put $215,000 there instead of $250,000, so the number's off slightly. The third set of rows down, the third section, is our commitment from the fiscal year 2014 Capital Improvement Budget. As of this moment, the colored rows indicate grants we've not received yet. Should we receive all the grants we've applied for, we'll be going into fiscal year 2013, and be committing just over $250,000 in capital improvement funds. All of our funds for 2013, our capital improvement funds, are already committed with matches or other projects. So anything we're applying for at this point is going to be coming from the 2014 budget. We typically get, I believe it's a million, in that area for capital improvement. $600,000 of that is earmarked for asphaltic, for pavement.
It's so much easier to say.
Pay. Well, I like...
That's right, asphalt.
For pavement. If we anticipate a 10% drop in sales tax revenue, and we only have $900,000, we'd still be okay if we applied for this grant. We do have to be careful, because there are other grants out there that we may want to apply for, and we don't want to start looking all the way out to 2015. That being said, I believe that's the extent of it. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Just a couple. What about the trees on that section? Are they going to be replaced? Are millions going to be put in, or are they just taken out?
We... when we were preparing for the CDOT grant, we did a walkthrough, and we came to the conclusion that probably 80% of the trees didn't have to come down. If we're doing an extensive project on Commercial Street where everything's getting ripped off, the likelihood that we're going to be able to save 80% of the trees is very slim. New trees will probably be needed. And those trees would be covered in the CDOT grant. So what we would do... and one of the things that we're in the process of doing right now is coordinating our effort in the downtown, because we have a DOLA grant to do extensive work, we have a CDOT grant to do extensive work. And there's a tremendous cost savings to be had by... And there's a tremendous cost savings to be had by mobilizing once for these things instead of every time you're going to do a little bit, you have to re-mobilize. That's another benefit, I think, to applying for the Phase Two grant now. We may be able to bid it out as one project instead of two, and that will save us a lot of money. We'll get economies of scale, I believe. And to the extent that we can fit the C-DOT project into that on Commercial Street, we're going, we're trying to do that. The design work for the intersections is where the C-DOT project has largely been completed. It's about ninety percent. And rather than just leaving the intersection alone and building the street, I think we're going to do all of Commercial Street under the DOLA grant, and that will free up other funds in the C-DOT grant to do more improvement. So everything is kind of in a little state of flux right now, but knowing that we have the funding in place for these projects, I think we're going to be able to get most of the work done here down the middle. But the trees will come face to face.
The other question? Well, I got two more. The parking lot there, can we do something with it to make it look a little bit better?
You're referring to Elm, on Plum, the corner of?
Uh, Elm.
Elm.
Where we can maybe take down the, the old pole lights and put some lights to match Main Street and a few things like that?
Yeah, we could, that's one of the things that we may be able to do by, we're dealing with, let me just look at the map real quick. We've got, we're doing work on the Cedar Street intersection, on Plum, on Elm, and on Church. So if we can cover all of that with the DOLA grant, that's going to free up significant funding in the C-DOT grant to put into other places, and that may be something that we can, we can look at.
My last question is, and I keep forgetting to come in and see you about this, but the new building there, the Carnicle Bill? Have you guys looked at it?
The one on Church?
That's unfinished? No, no, one on Commercial. It used to be the Carnicle Building where we have our library and stuff.
The toll tower.
Yeah. Have you noticed that up on the top there, the bricks are coming loose?
I haven't.
If you would take a look at that because they could fall and that because we park cars down below there. It was brought to my attention by one of the guys that was there at the apartments, but they are really loose. We need to really look at that. It's almost as bad as the Arco Building where the bricks were coming loose.
I can get with the contractor, David.
He just took a look at it to make sure. Thanks, Louis.
No problem.
Any additional questions?
Mr. Benard? Commercial Street, would that have a concrete base underneath those bricks?
Yeah, what we've anticipated is eight inches of concrete, and then I believe it's a half an inch or an inch of sand, and then the bricks on top of, on top of that.
That's probably the issue.
Yeah, I, you know, I don't know, what we don't know at this point is how many of the old historic bricks we're going to be able to reuse. We're going to try and reuse as many as possible, but we may have to do something that looks more like Cedar Street where we use newer bricks. There's a section of older bricks, and then there's a section of newer bricks. We don't know. We just don't know. And maybe we flip the bricks over and we find they're perfect and we can use them.
Can we use concrete stamps too? Maybe cheaper too? Make it look like the brick?
The one thing, you know, if you look at the intersection of Main and Commercial, the stamped concrete doesn't hold up as well. It's already cracked. You can see the, you know, right through. I don't honestly know how much of a cost savings there would be, but from a planning standpoint and given that we're on the historic register, I would, for a street like Commercial Street, I would use real brick. I would advise using real brick. If it was another street, you know, that wasn't a main street in the downtown, I would say maybe we can consider stamped concrete. But the cost savings of the one versus the other, I think in the historic district, it's better to go with the real brick. It has a feel that you can't get with stamped.
And the real brick is so much more aesthetically pleasing.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Some time ago, the north section of Commercial Street had worked out, and I'm trying to remember if it was like northbound Main and then southbound Main, how that was handled. And I guess my question is, can you speak to the concern about access to businesses in this three-block section? I'm sure that's going to happen.
We fully intend.
And how long the whole project might take.
Sure. We fully intend to have a meeting of the stakeholders, of business owners, to hear their concerns. What would seem to make sense to me at this point, having heard some concerns already, the plan is to always keep one lane open so traffic isn't stopped. We can do work on one side, and then we can switch and do work on the other side. Also, I believe timing is critical. Obviously, not doing it in the middle of the summer. But we're not going to be doing asphalt work, so it's conceivable that we can do this project through the winter when there isn't as much pedestrian traffic, and that would probably be the least amount of disruption to the businesses.
Those businesses, it seems to me, that are on the east side of Commercial, and given that parking lot that Frank spoke about at the corner of Elm and Commercial, have a little bit of an advantage with regard to access. You may go drive and park right in front of it, but you could be a pedestrian to get to it as compared to the ones on the west side of the street. But there are fewer businesses there as I would like, and it may not be quite the complication that I'm thinking is.
Sure, we're going to have to really figure out a viable solution to the timing. There's no question, but we are very cognizant of that disruption.
Understood, thank you.
Additional questions? Louis, I know you just said that you will be having meetings with the affected businesses, but I'd also encourage that we actually do outreach and go to those places of business, maybe take two or three at a time and spend some time one-on-one visiting with them, walking the area and get a better appreciation for maybe how we can accommodate their needs while we're doing this construction.
Sure. That's my problem.
Anything else? Thank you. Keep up the good work.
Thank you, Louis. Oh, yeah, we, we would ideally like to get this letter of support signed by the mayor. I don't know if that's going to be, actually, the application does require an action, so we would have to schedule a special. We'll schedule a quick special meeting on the thirtieth so we can get this taken care of. We were debating if we need to have official action to connect the application that says official action. We'll do a quick resolution for the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. The next agenda item is discussion on possibly developing council policies and procedures. And I believe, Mr. Aker, you're going to walk us through this one.
I am. Thank you, Matt and Mayor, members of the City Council. In the effort, since we had to kind of shift gears a little bit, I thought I would take, use some of this time to start the discussion about council policies and procedures. I affectionately call it sometimes as norms. I had sent out last, week before last, kind of a couple of sets of examples, one for the city of Ridgefield, Washington, and one for the city of Commerce City. And then also some information that I thought was pretty good that actually the city looked and has on their website. I'm all about not reinventing the wheel, but trying to see what things can fit and work for us as an individual community. But I thought these were a couple of good examples. And I guess today, some of the feedback I was looking for was, one, if you think this is a good idea, I think it would help us work better together as council and staff and council and the community, kind of set some of the expectations and standards, and gives people kind of a sense of, hey, we all know what's going to happen. And then also, if there's anything, if you've had a chance or if you just would like staff to kind of take a stab at drafting something based on these and trying to fit them for Trinidad, then we would forward that and then bring it back for more of a more formal discussion at a future work session. But also, if you had some questions or thoughts or other things that you may have run across that you thought might be good to include as well.
Well, I know you sent us the sample documents via email. Were they in anybody's packet?
I gave a hard copy to Mr. Schu at the same time. Given that this came up as a change over the weekend, I just added it to kind of fill in the time since we had some additional time today, trying to use it since we're all here, so.
I'll just mention, I just saw the agenda change this morning.
Okay.
I was waiting yesterday.
That's fine.
And so I've not had a chance to push up my readings.
Okay. So I just want to introduce it and just get the discussion started. And if that's all we do today, that's fine, just to, and I can bring it back at another date as well. And we could even potentially bring it on the thirtieth if people were comfortable with that, but I just wanted to use this time to introduce it at least.
I think it's a good idea. It provides a direction, a clarity, and everyone, everybody understands what the rules are, so to speak. I come from a quite a military background. The rules follow it to make sense. I recollect we were divided into policy, rules, and procedures. You know, rules just didn't violate policy, kind of like, you just told you how. And that seemed to be a good way to do it. I recall, if I get some, I couldn't see how much trouble I was in. It does. It gives everybody, the rules are viable by which we work.
Right. And Mr. Downs and I have started, and actually, we've got Tammy Tenoy taking a look at even updating, we're updating our employee policies as well. So it's kind of one of those things to get going.
It's easy for those that are probably, huh?
Yes. So sensing that we're not really, don't want to have too much discussion if everyone would mind, when they've got a chance, take a look at it. If you've got any questions or anything that you'd like me to consider, or if you've seen something else someplace else that you think you might want us to look at as far as potential to put it together, I would certainly welcome that input.
Are there any council members who need to be provided those documents again, either electronically or paper?
I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
How do you differentiate these council norms and procedures from the current ordinances that are in place?
I'll use Mr. Maité's example. To me, ordinances of place are law or rules. The charter is one of those. And what we'll do as we're developing these, these are more, I want to say administrative policy in some respect. They're things, guidelines of which we can be sought to use as to guide us on how we do our day-to-day business. Could be the example. What we'll be doing as we take a look at this, make sure that we don't contradict the charter first, any ordinances that are set, and then these will come third.
In doing a comparison between these proposals and our current ordinance, so many of them were duplicative that I didn't see what differentiation is.
Okay. And it may well be that we've got enough covered in our ordinances, and we may just want to take those out and put those in some plain language and pull them out, the ordinances to where they're easy to find as well.
And clearly, if one of these would conflict with an ordinance, the ordinance would prevail. But where they are redundant, it's not necessary to have redundancy.
It might be that we just need a bit more time to look at our ordinances and the home rule charter and then compare it with the suggestions. Unless, Mr. Downs, Mr. Aker, you've already begun work on something that you want to run by us?
And I, that's why I wanted to bring it forward because I didn't want to, I wanted to get councils read in some of your suggestions and input, and we'll definitely take a look at that. But I still think it's, I think it's good to have that. If there are places that are redundant, let's not duplicate them, just make sure they're consistent.
Any further comments? Appreciate it. I think if there are no further comments, we're ready to move to agenda item number five, which is discussion of other agenda items. And, Mr. Aker, is there anything you or your staff wish to share with council as a possibility for a future agenda or work session?
I think we cover most of it in our discussions with Mr. Tenoy coming next week on the thirtieth.
Good.
I'll take a look at the schedule, see if we can't also start our discussion on priorities, especially in light of creative districts, potential with the Main Street program, and then Mr. Downs with marijuana on the thirteenth. I don't have anything additional at this time.
Yeah, I just would like to very much encourage that we do, and clearly, take advantage of the time that we have. I imagine Mrs. Tenoy is not going to take that much time that we do talk about priorities and how to get the ball rolling. Creative districts, I'd also like to address Main Street program, just want some publicity on that and how we're approaching that. It's a little bit different than what was on the website this far as what's happening with Ball versus what's happening now, and I'd really like to get the ball rolling.
Yes, and I'm going to be meeting with staff on that as well. And the Main Street program with DOLA seems to be a little bit of a moving target on some things right now. It surprised us when we get the announcement this week that they're ready to rock and roll. So, but we'll bring, definitely, as we committed early on, we'll bring that back to city councils for your consideration before we move forward.
Anything else from the council?
Now, Mayor, I'd like to speak. I'm getting a little bit better on the computers. I'm not like Jay or anybody now, but I've been looking at a few things, and I came up last night on the computer, and I looked under it, and it says Purgatory River Trails System, two thousand nine master plan. And what I came up with is some kind of important information, especially, I mean, it was really thick, and there was a lot of good information about it, but I pulled this out on page number nineteen, and it deals with trails and parks and stuff that we have to look into. And this was adopted in two thousand nine as I have in my hand. And while I have Louis on the side of me here, I would like to know, Louis, is there any way that we could, we as the council could be handed some sort of literature or diagram or how many parks that we actually do have in the city of Trinidad and the total amount of trails that we have to maintain within the city of Trinidad? You don't have to answer me right now.
I can.
But, because the reason I'm asking you is that, you know, it seems to me that our parks right now, and I'm not saying nothing bad about our park department or whatever because I think our park department is very undermanned, don't have the right equipment to maintain all these parks that we do have right now. I think the best thing for this council and maybe for me is to look into, maybe in the 2014 budget, to where we could come up with some kind of money that maybe we could hire some part-time employees to help these park crews, maybe get them some more equipment. Because I know I've seen several on several occasions that our park guys are out there trying to cut grass, and these lawn mowers are older than I am. So I think that's one thing that we have to pursue. I mean, we're looking at, I mean, don't get me wrong, looking at building new trails and getting more parks established is great because that's what we need for our community, bring people in. But right now, if you would look at this, and I would like to give you a clock, just give you this information so you can look at that, you can answer my question for me. But I think it's an idea that we do really have to help these park guys out. I mean, we drove, I drove by Chaminot Park the other day, and Chaminot Park is kind of getting a little bit randy looking again. Now, I don't understand, before, I think it was last year, that we put some type of chemical on it that really revived, really revived the grass and stuff, the Chaminot Park trees and stuff like that. Now, I don't know if any money was budgeted to the park to buy any more of this material that really helped it, some kind of a soil helper or whatever that we put on the Trinidad Catholic cemetery that really helps them. I think the city done that last year, but I don't know if it was, if there's any money budgeted for that either. But those are just a few questions that maybe Louis could answer me first, and then maybe Mr. Aker could give me an answer on that other.
Um, yeah, sure. There's a couple of parks, obviously, to your question too. With regard to the maintenance of existing facilities, that would be more in the realm of parks. It's something we're very cognizant of in planning. The projects that we're proposing with regard to grant funding are facilities that are intended to need, to not need that type of maintenance. No grass to cut, more natural settings that don't require maintenance, like flower beds and things like that. So they're designed with that in mind. So they're designed with that in mind. I think we have some great park facilities here in Trinidad. Chaminot Park is a beautiful park, Central Park is a beautiful park. But what we lack are trails connecting them. We only, we have exactly two miles of trails in Trinidad.
Two miles?
The Riverwalk. That's excluding trails that may exist in a developed park like Central Park. I mean, there's a path that you walk around, but I wouldn't classify that as a trail.
What about our parks? How many total parks do we have? Even the little ones that we have for the kids and stuff like that?
That I can get you an exact figure.
You might be curious about Downs.
But yeah, I believe the number is eight, but...
But on this, like I say, on this information that I got, Lewis, it, there's some real good information there, and it even says they're involved neighbors in trail projects to build a sense of ownership, create a trail watch program, maintain good surveillance of the corridor.
I agree.
And that's really good information, but it seems like, you know, we try to establish new things, and try to bring new things forward, which is great for our city, but, you know, this was done in 2009. And like I say, I'm not a master on a computer, but if I could find this, why don't we as a city follow through instead of putting things on the map first?
Well, actually, we've used that document to get most of our trail plans. When you're talking about the Boulevard addition, that document. When you're talking about the connector trail to the State Park, that document. Basically, everything we could implement in that document, we've used, and we've used it very extensively.
I don't like the Riverwalk.
You don't like it?
I mean, it's beautiful, but I'm afraid to go down it.
That's a concern. It's very much a concern, especially on the area when you cross Linden and head out of town. That area is dark and...
Well, we went bike riding, and I didn't like what I saw underneath it.
There's, you know, sometimes you pass people drinking out there. Yeah, it can be intimidating. I jog on the Riverwalk sometimes, but I don't go there much.
How often is the policeman on the bicycle? Yeah, I see him quite a bit, you know, when I'm working, I see him down on this end, but it's that end, because I understood he was to watch that area in particular, and that's why he was on bicycle, but I don't know how often or what his schedule is.
One of the other big problems with the Riverwalk is it really doesn't connect anything. It's just an isolated stretch of trail. And that's also part of the impetus behind extending it all the way up to Trinidad Athletics Day Park, so you have a facility that goes somewhere. Eventually, we can extend it the other way. It, in that plan, it calls for extending the Riverwalk all the way down to Cougar Canyon. And, you know, there's a lot of nice areas to walk around Cougar Canyon, too. So if we can do that, then we've got a trail that goes from somewhere to somewhere. But all of what we can, we could have implemented with this trail plan we have, I think it's been our most successful plan, actually, with regard to creative project. So it has been used very extensively. You may recall, we acquired this property up here by the water tank for the landfill to use for landfill. That's only a small portion of that property. I think the real prize is what's on top of the mesa. It's a beautiful trail system waiting to happen, and we now own 120 acres of it. With something like that, I think it's feasible to bring in a professional, a volunteer trail building group, to help that, develop that site as a community effort. I think that's something that we could develop with very little funding, and have a very nice amenity.
Could it possibly be used like for mountain bike trails or combination hiking mountain bike? Because I know that's very popular, and it's a tremendous amenity in the mountains, and some of the smaller communities are really exploiting that, and people come from the metro areas, and they, they really enjoy riding and hiking.
And we, we could look in that 2014 budget, and like I say, maybe we could try to create, we could try to find some type of money where we could get some part-time summer help. That's creating jobs for a few people that be in our town, helping them out for three, four months or whatever, plus helping our parks department, which they're, they're so behind. I think they bang their head on the concrete each day and say, I'm over here finishing this park, I'm going over here, and now I got to go back over here, we just don't have the time.
And all the trail programs might even be an option.
When I was on council before, I kind of raised a little bit of cane about giving them a trailer. They were hauling one lawnmower, which is big, the big lawnmowers, on one trailer, bring it to Central Park, go back to the, to the shop, get into the other lawnmower, bring that back. So it was just a waste of, you know, manpower also there, too. So I think we as the council, and maybe Mr. Akers, and maybe you, to really, we could look at this, maybe, like I say, because if you've got cool parks, you've got nice trails, you're going to get tourism. You know, you're not going to get tourism that's going to go down in somebody's park, and you're going to buy a lunch, and there's graffiti all, all over the, all over the table and stuff like that.
We need to maintain.
We're going to maintain those, and like I say, I'm not blaming the parks department because they're, they're too far behind. So if there's something we could do, Mr. Aker, you know, maybe I could, you know, we could appreciate that, and Lewis, and like I say, if you're familiar with this, good for you, but I just wanted to see that.
Kara, I saw you raise your hand.
Just to let you know, Councilmember Bonato, the 2006 Master Plan for Parks and Rec, the Parks and Rec Advisory Commission is currently updating that plan.
Oh, excellent.
And just, just so you might know, they don't have a council liaison right now, if anybody wanted to be council liaison to the Parks and Rec Advisory Commission.
Hey, Joel, we are.
Just one other thing to your point, Mayor. One of the most exciting grants I think we have right now is the Trail Greenway Master Plan Grant that we've received. And the idea behind that grant is a little different than the focus of this trail plan. This trail plan is looking at inside city limits, how we can connect things. What this plan will do, and we received a $45,000 grant matched by about $13,000 from the city, so just under $60,000, to do a comprehensive study of all of the open space that surrounds Trinidad. And what it's going to look at is the potential to have bike ways, and to have equestrian trails, and to have hiking trails, and to look at it as a complete network. So this is the kind of thing, when you look at what Salida has done, or other, other towns in, in Colorado, they've really used the open space that surrounded them to their maximum benefit, and, you know, this is big money, these industries. If you establish a reputation as a good biking community or a biking destination, you know, there's a lot of potential for economic development in that.
Mr. Aker?
Councilmember Bonato, to answer your question, yes, we did budget some funds this year for fertilization-type treatments. I know he did do the first treatment. I'll be talking with him about the second treatment. He has had some numerous, some line breakage this year, some of the lines are getting kind of old, like in Central Park, so I think that budget has eroded a little bit. But I will work with the park superintendent on that. Most, some of the other parks are actually looking a little bit better as well. So Chaminot Park, my understanding is, one, what it was built on is a challenge. Second, I believe, and something we'll be taking a look at as we do the budget for next year, and look at capital improvements, is my understanding is that irrigation system is not the exact thing that probably should be in that park. My understanding is if you use the pressure full-blown, it just pops everything. If you cut it way down, it doesn't get enough water in places. So I think there's some challenges on how, how it was, how we inherited that park, so to speak. And I support, and I believe I've, I've said this before, is we have to maintain what we've got. And what I'm working with staff as we go into the budget for next year is, is how do we capitalize on like the lottery funds to help us with some of the maintenance stuff? I talked with Dave this morning about some mowers, and, you know, some budget cuts last year didn't get him what he wanted, so hopefully we can figure a way how to save some of that money from this year, help offset it to go for next year and buy exactly what he wants. So we are paying attention to that, and I applaud you for bringing it up, so. And as we get into the budget discussion, this will be a good thing to talk about, not only for parks, but also streets and bridge, on how to maintain what we've got. Because sometimes we do have to be careful, and it is good to have these planning grants, but then we've got to make sure we've got the staff available to, to actually maintain anything that we should build. What Parks and Boulevard does do is they take advantage of the prison labor, and he's been getting them about once a month, not quite as much as he has in the past, but he's using them also.
I've seen him over at, like, Junior Park.
In fact, I had a few complaints that came in last week, and I talked to Dave, he had taken care of them. That day was just a matter of, when did his staff get to him, when someone took a picture of something and showed it to me?
How are we doing on the repair to whatever that little thing is where the kids, yeah, the family thing?
The piece should be in here in the next week or so to get that installed. I did ask about that last week, and it is being fabricated, and we'll get that installed, so there'll be a few weeks of good weather left where everyone can join it. And knock on wood, it's not as easy to destroy as the last one was. It's like the last filament is the switch, so...
Once we get it installed and it's up and running, could we ensure that we communicate to the local media so that it can promptly get out to the community and...
Sorry.
Because Chaminot Park, it really is a beautiful little park. We need to take good care of that.
And no pun intended, but we'll try to make a big splash with that.
Great. Ms. Mott?
Yes, Mr. Aker, I'm really thrilled to be now here for the main director. Where do you stand on public works and electric power and light?
Public works and utilities director, we've got two folks that have expressed interest. One has actually put in an application. I talked to another person that was interested, that said he was going to put his application in this week. I'm going to try to broaden my search a little bit. I don't know if it's a salary that's scaring people away, or if it's just the duties, but I want to take a look at that and try to get the right person involved. I'm not going to discount the two that have expressed interest in putting applications. In fact, one of them could very well be a good fit, but I'd like to have a bigger pool to pull from.
So what do you think we should do at this point?
Couple of options. One is, and that I'm doing, is taking a look at the salary. I've got it advertised at $75,000 to $85,000. That might be a little bit low. The other option could be that if, that we could go a route of getting a professional that's a nationwide, someone nationwide to try to help us do some search. That could run $10,000 to $18,000, but could be well worth it as well, since we're not having the good results on our own, but I will come back with some customers.
Is there a possibility we might be trying to put too many hats on one person?
You know, there's different rules of thumb on that. Some people say it can be done, and it is a prudent way to do public works and to combine utilities. Of course, there are some that think differently. I, I think from a cost savings, if we can get the right person, it is beneficial to have one person that wears those hats, and then have the, the four men under that person take some more of the role, and I think they've got the capability of doing that. I don't think a, just like with water and wastewater, we don't have a specific engineer in that case. I think we can do the same thing with power and light, as we look at, at any type of improvements, we can have a consultant help us with that. Part of, one of my concerns with, with power and light and all our utilities is our workers are, have got 20, 30 years' experience, is looking at the succession planning for the people that are actually on the ground doing the work. I visited the power plant today, and it's amazing what they do, but they've all been there for 30-plus years, and we don't have someone on staff that's actually learning to do what they do to continue that, that work. So it's really good that we've had employees that have stayed a long time, but we just don't, we've got that, we're going to have a gap that many employers, the local and state and federal governments facing, we've got people that have been there a long time, and you don't have that young or mid-level people there. So that's part of what I think we have to be looking at in the next years, is the succession planning as well.
How much has the job description for the public direct, public works director actually changed since the last time we hired one?
As far as the actual work, or...
Work and the requirements and the qualifications?
I think it's, from what I'm using, stayed relatively the same. I think when, when Mr. Hill was hired, I think it was updated at that time. What I am looking at is how we're, been working with Mr. Fernandez, is how utilities changed a little bit. Because I was pleasantly surprised, some of the utilities superintendent's position requirements with stormwater, and that's largely typically public works.
May I suggest, just for information purposes, that maybe the council be provided the job descriptions, so just so we can be familiar with the scope of duties and responsibilities that you're targeting?
Be happy to have that sent out, too.
I know it's changed from the last one. I'd love to have that.
Anything else from council? I have just one other thing I want, I'm hoping that you can help council get its, wrap its mind around it. I'm certainly not an expert in understanding what urban renewal is. I'm not an expert in understanding the nuances of this Main Street program, or the Creative District, et cetera. Would it be possible that perhaps staff could pull together a memo, or something instructional, kind of like an idiot's guide to the Main Street, urban renewal, et cetera, so that we would have a little bit of a cheat sheet? I've been doing research on my own, and it's rather a daunting task trying to, and also like, business improvement districts, that's just a suggestion, so I'm hoping you might be able to help us with that.
We can definitely, we can definitely do that. Staff's already gotten somewhat of a start on it, we could put it together, and if council, once you look at it, we can also do a work session on it. Because I think as we move forward with priority setting, making the decision that if we're going to reactivate or enlarge, or whatever we want to do with an urban renewal authority, I think we'll have to have that discussion, so we can get that information to you.
Is there any chance I can be on the next work session, since we have such a limited agenda, even if you just restricted it to urban renewal? Because I think I mentioned it at the last meeting, and we've got this bonus Tuesday.
Want me, you want to add it to the 30th?
I think that would be, I think it would be good.
There's also some formal training scheduled.
Yes.
I can't recall exactly when and where, but it's something sponsored, I believe, by CML, specifically deals with urban renewal development.
It's August.
August 15. Oh, I remember, that was in our little packet, yes.
Exactly, so I think that would be timely.
I would encourage.
I think summer, whoever wants to go, I'm interested in that.
I'm planning to.
I would.
It's very important, if we revitalize the urban renewal, there's lots of pros and cons to it, but it's not something that is very intuitive, and that you'll, there's, there is some study required so that you're familiar with it, or...
You've got to do a white study, you've been involved, get the community involved, the benefits are, is what you can do and how you can use the funding to help the area that is the urban area. So I think it is, it's commonly used, and this really applies to it.
And who that funding actually benefits, and the first question will be whether we reactivate the existing urban renewal agency or dispose of it and create a new.
I think it's...
Because it's never, the old one's never been resolved.
That'd be a good job as well, as a driver.
I think for the, let's look at urban renewal.
Get rolling with that.
Anything else? And having completed all of the agenda items, including...
One more item, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Art track is coming up this week, and council had mentioned, you got the trailer ready, and I guess the art track is six, five to eight. And the council had mentioned taking stents in the art track, so if you, let me, let me know when that happens.
Is this, this Friday?
This Friday, the 26th.
One other thing, I was approached by SCRT, and by the way, I'm no longer on board, it was a liquor license complication, I couldn't be a director anymore. But I was approached, I still, you know, very much enjoy those people, we maintain close relationships, and, you know, SCRT was an important part of the Creative District, and it was requiring them to have a home art theater. And, you know, SCRT is getting by, but I think, I was asked whether council might consider having a city council, like, at one of the performances. And if anyone would like to contact me and participate in something like that, with a social occasion.
I think that'd be great. That would be absolutely fantastic. Yeah, I think they even have some kind of deal, if you buy 10 tickets or something, you get a discount, so it'll support SCRT. Frankly... Frankly, SCRT, I see that as a major keystone for the Creative District. And I believe we have to do everything we can to support it and the guts are excellent. They have excellent plays and...
That'd be a great idea and really a show of support by council. And I, Ms. Bouchois, Ms. Marshall and I went to a play there on Saturday and Ms. Bouchois has emphasized the point that they really have to survive this season and all of their plans, everything they're doing in the future. And they just, they really have to survive this year.
Does this sound like an idea that we could go with council?
Talk with them and we can have a post, you know, we can talk to a person.
Oh, that would be wonderful. Count me in. Wonderful. And I think that would model to the residents that we're trying to do everything we can to keep moving our business forward and supporting our creative endeavors within the city.
I think that'd be, would be good. I went to, my wife and I went to, I last, this past weekend or previous weekend, thoroughly.
Could we require all of staff to go too? That'd be fun.
Encourage.
I think staff will come, that's right.
Encourage. Very good. Is there anything additional? And otherwise, having concluded all our business, we stand the journey. Thank you.